So we can get started. Good evening again. I am Council Vice President Parcella Sestims and I want to welcome you to our Town Hall meeting in the second ward this evening. So glad to have each and every one of you here. This is your meeting and so we're glad that you are spending your evening here to address concerns, to hear about the vision of the city moving forward. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the council persons that are in the room. First, our council president Steve Gary Hoppaday. Councilman Charles McCray from the third ward. Councilman Robert Graham from the first ward. I also want to acknowledge our Assemblywoman, the Wonder Woman Linda Carter at the back. And are there any other elected officials in the room? Okay, I just didn't want to overlook anyone. At this time, I'm going to turn the mic over to our mayor, the Honorable Adrian O'Mat, and he will introduce his administration.
Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this Town Hall meeting. We have been having these meetings around the city in each ward and we will continue to do so. The next one that will follow this will be in the third ward and that will be about a month or so from now. But in the meantime, we want to get started. In the past, we had members of the cabinet giving presentations that lasted for five or seven minutes or so. We're gonna not do that this evening. I'm gonna ask our key members to just give a brief introduction of themselves and I will then come back and give an overview of, you know, some of the items that I believe we will be touching on this evening, but we are here to answer all of your questions. And I will start the introduction from my back with the business administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. My name is Abby Levinson. I'm the Business Administrator. I'm also the HR Director, so if you have any questions about employment, I'm happy to answer those as well. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is James Avney. I'm the Speaker for City Planners.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kenneth Zildis and I'm the Director of Fire Department.
Good evening. I'm Snowvia Fields. I'm the Director of Economic Development.
John Louise, Director of Solidarity and Social Intelligence.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, Abby, the Director of Public Publicity.
And we deliberately tried to keep introductions very brief because we want you to have most of the time, but we know that there's been a lot of things happening in the city over the last several years and economic development has been a great driver of the things that have happened in the city. We have transformed our recreational spaces. Every park in the city has been invested in. Our Rushmore Recreational Complex has seen about $12 billion worth of investments over the past four or so years. We have invested in Milk Campbell Park. We've invested in Hannah Atkins. We have put a lot of money into recreation and I am sure Snowvia will touch on the main recreation facility that we are still working on. It's going to be the largest investment in recreation in the city's history and that is the Recreational Center of Excellence across the street from City Hall. We have worked fairly hard on making Plainfield a place that is inviting to those that are in Plainfield and those that are outside of Plainfield. We've done that by aggressively addressing the issue of crime, making Plainfield a place that is safe and the perception of crime, we have dealt with that and we have actually delivered. And we made Plainfield a very safe city for everyone. In terms of infrastructure, we've invested in our road. We rebuilt, we paved, we surfaced our roads and that cost a million of dollars. With the exception of Front Street, known as Route 28, which is a state highway, we have not used any taxpayer dollars to rebuild that highway, but we have resurfaced that sidewalks, intersections, curves from our border with De Nelen all the way up to Plainfield Avenue and that continues. In terms of public safety, I'll touch on that a little. I am sure that when questions are raised, Director Dapley will be able to respond. And we have also put a lot of money in making the city a city of the future. We've invested millions of dollars in providing Wi-Fi in all of our parks and the next phase of that will be to make sure that there's Wi-Fi in every home in the city of Plainfield so that in times of emergency, there wouldn't be an issue people connecting. So students, those who have trouble being able to afford Wi-Fi in their homes, we're gonna provide free Wi-Fi in every home in the city of Plainfield. The current project, which is in phase two, will have a public safety component where there will be weapons detection in the cameras that will be installed across the city of Plainfield. We are serious about historic preservation and we have done that with the PIPAC, which is a place where people come each and every week for the many cultural activities that are there at the PIPAC. But we have also focused on preservation that relates to the former YMCA, which is going to be a recreational center of excellence. So there's a plethora of things that we have done, that we have accomplished in terms of economic redevelopment by generating roughly $4 million in revenues that has led to the stabilization of our taxes year after year. And so there's a lot that we've accomplished, a lot more that needs to be done. And all of that has been made possible with the great administrative team that we have in place, but also with the support, with the partnership of the governing body because none of these things would be possible without a governing body that is working with the administration. And so we have done this work together and we can assure you that there's more that needs to be done and will be done by this team with the support of the governing body and we look forward to a very robust conversation. You can ask any questions. We will provide you with the answers and if you don't have the answer this evening, I can assure you that we will get back to you with an answer. And so at this time, I would like to open up the floor. We have individuals with microphones. Okay, where are you? And they will be coming to you. Raise your hands and they'll be coming to you. They'll be holding the mic so that we have control over the mic.
Mayor, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege and acknowledge Councilwoman Julian Cherry has entered into the building, Councilwomen of the first and fourth ward. And I also would like to acknowledge our County Commissioner Rebecca Williams-Susan.
First question.
Good evening. My name is Bertie Russell-Lowen. I asked to speak first because I just turned eighty in September and I have some black eyed peas, cornbread, and baked chicken at home. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Well, I can appreciate that you're inundated with a number of things that you have going on in the city of Plainfield. I've lived here for close to 50 years. I've seen this city go from something absolutely beautiful, no fault of yours, to so much changes and not for the good. For example, a lot of stores with all this garbage on the windows. What is that about? Then there's this property on a course on the playground on Cyrus Field. I don't know why I'm still standing. I see people going in and coming out, you know, staying there, coming out. And then there's a house right down the street from them on the corner of Los Angeles, the same thing. Then you have this one over here on Bertman Street, Bertman and Fifth. Fifth! Now, I can say these things because I'm a doer. I lived on St. Mary's Avenue for twenty-five years when I looked at the backyard, looked like the city dump. I took that backyard from that dump, 114th Ave and Gardens Lane, to the front page of the Courier-News some years ago. So I can certainly talk about these things. I can appreciate the fact that you have certainly accomplished many, many things in this city, but there's still a lot of loose ends. At the present time, I live on 7293rd Street. Beautiful house, clean street. Down the street, across from that little red brick school, right there on the Third Street side, all kinds of stuff there being transacted there. However, to the rest of the decade, I tell me, there is a policeman that I know with you before I came there that sits in the parking lot, feel very safe. But then they be doing different things, like I said, I'm Asian. I know. I grew up in New York, so I know what hookups and, you know what I mean, that kind of stuff is. So I thank you for your time. I hope that what I've shared with you will be of some help to you with helping you and your colleagues to make our town a little bit better, cleaning up some of these problems. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you for, I want to thank you for bracing us with your presence at the age of eighty. We appreciate you being here and we thank you for all of your comments and we will take action on some of the many things that you've raised. And I'd be the first to admit that the work is not yet done. We still have a lot of work to do. I've been in the city for forty-six years and we've come a long way, but there's still work that needs to be done. And I appreciate you bringing some of those things that are in your attention. Thank you.
And I have to stay busy, so I'm concerned for you.
Seven thirty minutes, okay. I appreciate that. The next time you should bring us some of those black eyed peas. Thank you.
Hi. I wanted to know, what are we, you said historic preservation is one of your priorities, but we have such a terrible time at code enforcement, especially people doing work and replacing windows and things on the weekend and we have a really hard time getting stop work orders. And also, another thing I want to address is the garbage. I was hoping when PMUAA was dissolved that the garbage issue would get better, but our streets are still really, really dirty, like dirtier than Jersey City streets and Newark streets and that shouldn't be. Like even, I applaud the garbage, the people who pick up the garbage, but if something drops, they leave it in the street and then it blows all over the place and it makes our neighborhoods look so bad. So what is the plan for those things?
Well, thank you for the question. I'm going to ask Director Fields in terms of court enforcement and Director John Louise in terms of the garbage situation that you have brought our attention. But before that answer, I would just like to say this, that we need the help and support of the community. And oftentimes, you're driving down a street and you see people just tossing stuff out of their windows. And those are people who live in the city of Plainfield. So this is the responsibility of all of us, but to the extent that it's there, then we have a responsibility to make sure that we clean garbage on our roadways across the city. And I will let our director deal with that, but we'll start with Director Fields on the court enforcement question that you raised.
Um, in terms of code enforcement, if we get an address, we will send someone out to do an inspection to see if someone is operating without emit. If they're operating without emit, it can carry a hefty fine of $1,500 per day.
So we use the app, the reported app, and I know myself and several of our neighbors, we live in Preston Historic District, like even last weekend, we reported a house, but we never know what happens because the windows are still there. There's no stop work order on any of the buildings. We report on a regular basis. We use that app religiously and it just doesn't seem like they're ever addressed. So like how often are people checking the app or actually going out there to see? Because a lot of times this work is happening on Saturdays and Sundays and there's no one working nine to five. They're doing the illegal work on the weekends.
So we are looking at the hours of operation, but I will say we do check it on a daily basis. It goes directly to either our zoning officer or it goes to the inspection office, which is the code enforcement. After this, I can give you my email. You can choose on getting emails to email me directly with the address and we'll send it back. Thank you.
And before you continue, please, when you ask questions, please state your name and your address. Thank you.
I'm Jen Florencio, 816 Third Place.
And I would also add, you can copy your council person as well.
I, you and I have emailed about parking on lines.
I'll just address the litter issue. Since we took over PMUAA, we made tremendous gains in our scheduling and our overall service. Now, are we perfect? Absolutely not. I'm out there every day. I see a lot of friendly faces in the audience and they know my commitment and my dedication to whatever job I'm tasked with. But again, we're not perfect. If you see any of that kind of activity, I'll give you my cell number right hand. You write it down. It's 908. 908-966-1787. I've had that for about 31 years. You can call me and I will return your call.
Can you repeat that?
It's 908-966-1787. But again, I'm out there, but we definitely got, we made a lot of tremendous improvements, but we're not perfect and we'll address that if in fact we have employee that has, that needs to be trained a little bit more or we'll definitely, you know, do that.
Well, I'm just talking about the general litter. Like we live close to downtown and there's garbage and for years, we've tried to campaign to get trash cans because we're so close to this high school and where people walk there, like even in the morning when I walk through Library Park, there's like school lunches like thrown around the park. Like there's garbage blowing everywhere, down by the library, in Preston Avenue. It's horrible.
Litter, litter is an issue. It has been my whole career. We do everything we can to come up with creative ways. We have summer programs. We have, we just purchased a small ATV vehicle that you'll start to see that back on the road now that the weather has improved, that we're out there. But I can tell you firsthand, as the mayor mentioned, out two streets, that I personally was out there as well. And if you went an hour later, you would question my honesty if I told you I did it. So we need to not only pick up the litter, which we're trying our best, but we need help from the public and also we need people to understand that they need to clean up after themselves. And that message is not with a lot, and it's aggravating. It's very, very disappointing when you do a good job and then an hour later it's like, what happened? But that doesn't keep us, we're still motivated to come up with creative ways. Director Dapley's out there. We got the street sweepers out there. Now that we're under one umbrella, we need utilities and public works. We're constantly come up with ways to work together to try to improve. Like when he's out with his sweepers, his Rose McCamp's sweepers, we have sidewalk guys going down. We're blowing, so we're doing everything we can to do the best we can.
How about working with public garbage cans, especially in high traffic areas? And I know you've talked this, but Jersey City cleaned up their entire city with the Stop the Drops campaign and I can tell you, I pick up at least 10 little bags of chips from the kids walking back and forth. I think in the front of my house every single day, almost an entire bag of garbage because of just the kids going back and forth. So start in schools and put public garbage cans where there's high traffic areas.
I can tell you that public cans sometimes create more garbage because what happens is, this is just my experience. I know you said Jersey City's cleaning up, but the cans, a lot of times people overfill them and then you get the wind coming and blowing it around. There are cans strategically placed. If you think there's a spot that we can put them, I'll be more than glad you can see that. But sometimes it creates more because people see the can and they have poor habits and they'll put a big garbage bag in there and then other kids throw things on top and then the wind comes because we didn't get there at that moment and it blows the litter out into the streets. So sometimes it creates more of an issue as well as sometimes items are placed that shouldn't be placed there. But we're definitely looking to your concern. Okay, next question, please.
Yeah, John Burris, 1115 the Red Avenue. Three quick questions. First, I noticed there's a number of street signs that are down and they've been down for quite a while. I was just wondering, is there any plan to put them back up? Any idea or why are they down? Particularly going down Pemberton Street, there's a number of street signs that are down. Secondly, along Woodland Avenue, coming into Plainfield off of Maple, there, the side of the road is very chopped up and, you know, particularly during some kind of weather, when you're trying to drive not towards the middle but towards the side, it's kind of hazardous. And I was wondering, is there any plan to fill that up? And lastly, I know Fine Fair on South Avenue is closing down and there's a lot of development on South Avenue, a lot of housing development on South Avenue. I was just wondering, is there any, is there any update on the plan to replace Fine Fair with another supermarket?
So I would like the team handling most of the questions, but the comment that I will make about your reference to coming from Maple Avenue in Edison on Woodland Avenue. Not too long ago, we resurfaced the entire stretch of Woodland Avenue from, I believe, from South Avenue to our border with South Plainfield and Edison. So I'm not sure if you were speaking about a roadway in Plainfield as opposed to a roadway in answer. And I'll ask the team to address the other questions.
What was your next, the other question, Paul?
The street signs being down around the city, is there any reason why they're down? Are kids knocking them, kids knocking them down? And is there any plan to replace them? And also the Fine Fair supermarket, is there, is there an update on replacing that with another market?
Well, I'll address the street signs. Most of the street signs and traffic signs, yes. Anywhere they're down, we'd like someone to give us a corner, let us know, but they do go back up. Sometimes when roads are being paved and when you're curving sidewalks, they have to come down, but they do go back up. So anywhere you stand along Pemberton Avenue, wherever they be, you can just give the information to your lady in the back, all the streets will make sure to go up. That's our job. We do that every day. We go out and check the street signs, traffic signs, etc., that may be down and replace them. That's part of the plan with knowing that in the city of Plainfield. So we'll address any issues you may have with that, okay? And she'll give you all the information, our phone numbers, etc., so we can address those issues. But any type of signs, street signs and traffic signs.
Supermarket.
Sure. As far as the Fine Fair, the supermarket, we are actively working with the property owner there as well as some of our other realtors to try to attract either another supermarket or a farmer's market to go in that location in the interim. That location is coming up for development, but the interest is to make sure that we still have a supermarket or a farmer's market in that way.
Hi, Rich Goodall, 313 Franklin Place, Plainfield. First, I wanted to make a comment on the street sweeping. I know in Crescent, as she mentioned, we have a lot of trash and everything. We got one side of the parking years ago, one side of the street parking. But the problem now is that cars are all parked on one side of the street, so the street sweeper comes through often, but only gets half of the road. So perhaps maybe one day I'll want that it's alternate side, so the street sweeper could come in and do a good job cleaning the streets. My other question was with the, they're doing, PSCNG is doing a lot of replacement of gas lines, like through the neighborhood. I know they're putting down like temporary patches. Is that a permanent solution or is there plans to go back and repaint those, redo the city or PSCNG? And then my last point is, this may be unpopular, but is there any plans to do anything with the deer population, which seems to, I know they have the deer concept. It seems to increase every year, but, you know, it just seems every year there's more and more deer and there's less and less space. So I don't know if there's any further plans to help reduce that population a little bit.
On your last question about the deer, that continues to be, that continues to be an issue for all of us in this city. Their population continues to increase year after year. I personally had to enclose my property so that my grandkids are able to ruff on my grass and so that I can grow some vegetables and so on. And that's the issue that so many of us as homeowners have in the city. The city doesn't have a deer culling program, but the county does. And for some, it's controversial. The county has a deer program where they use bow arrows in the winter months and they do it in county parks. And that is what has been done. Beyond that, I am not aware of any other program, but the city itself doesn't have a program. Concerning the parking on Crescent, that's something that we can definitely look into, not only for Crescent, but for some of the other streets where that might be an issue. To consider alternate side of the street parking, so. Yes, so we took note of that and it is something that we will consider and have a discussion with the governing body. And it was something I see that. Oh, PSCG, you want to address that, Director? Go ahead.
Yes, for PSCG, that's a good question and that's something we, we were part. Yes, for P S E N G, that's a good question. And that's something we wish, we were hard on making sure the streets are done, resurfaced. So right now, my engineers are going to talk for public service so we can address the issues of those streets that were off, on open, close the map up. We're going to go curb to curb, we're curbing some line a lot of those streets. They're warming back based on the size of the cutout. So we're looking at all of that across the city. That's done with public service. That's with the emergency board as well. So we're addressing a lot of utility companies to ensure that all streets are done. Whether it's starting the brakes or putting the planes together, making their contracts together, and I'm doing it so we can take care of what needs to be done. Okay, so all the streets are like that. We're doing the replacement and everything done. Nothing's going to be left, just to put a patch on. We're going to make sure it's done.
And these hu- these utility cuts are unnecessary to deal with. In the case of the water company, the lead lines have to be replaced. So they've been doing that all across the city. So roads that we have paved though longer than two or three years ago have been torn up as a result of the utility work that is absolutely necessary. But we are holding the utility companies, big to the fire, as the director said, either pay from central line to curb or curb to curb. Because we've invested millions of dollars in taxpayer dollars resurfacing miles and miles of roadway and several ones have been doubled for good reason. So we have to make sure that they're returning to their previous state and that will happen.
And I just want to add that we codified that via ordinance um within the past twelve months. So we've worked with the council and they passed an ordinance to ensure that anybody who comes in and does work on our streets has to repave it either curb to curb or curb to central line. So legally they have to do that now.
Is there a timeline for it or?
It, it passed, oh, is there a timeline for how quickly they have to do it? It's not, the ordinance doesn't have a timeline in it, but they typically want to do as much as they can at one time. So they obviously, you know, they'll do a whole area and then come back and do the same thing.
And and just a further add to that, what happens when we make sure there's enough streets in an area, because to get a contract with a company in one street, they don't move that way. They try to do it in a group of locations. So that's what happens with that. So yes, once we get a group, there is a timeline from that point, yes.
Can you do?
Matt Rice, nine seventy Hillside Avenue, about three questions. What kind of businesses are we trying to attract to the city? Number two, how we improve homeownership? And number three, how to provide, provide more footwell handling?
All of that is in the hands of Sanobia Fields.
So in terms of attracting businesses to the city, we are looking for now that we have several of our developments going. We have over a billion dollars in development. But in some of our commercial spaces, we're really looking to fill those commercial spaces as well as work on our small business owners. So we are looking to attract more diversity in restaurants. We are looking to attract more service industries. We are looking at supermarkets and other entertainment industries. To do this, we've had, we've conducted a market analysis to tell us what industries we should be investing in. And we also have contracted with a retail recruiter to help us attract national anchors to the city. In terms of helping homeownership, I believe that was your second question. What we are doing with that, we've invested in a number of developments that focus on single family homes, townhomes, as well as two-family homes for sale. So for example, within the second ward, we're going to be building four fourteen affordable townhomes for sale. And with those fourteen affordable townhomes for sale, since they are going to be built on property that is owned by the city, we have partnered with the developer that instead of receiving all the necessary benefits from selling the property, we're going to be investing in a down payment assistance for Plainfield residents. So for first-time home buyers that are Plainfield residents, they will be receiving down payment assistance. Then in terms of affordable housing, the mayor set a goal last September, or the September before last, of looking at a thousand affordable units by twenty twenty nine. So we can say that we have over eight hundred affordable units under contract right now, so we are well towards that goal. What we are going to see coming to the second ward, that's when we locate it behind the Y M C A, we're going to see two hundred and fifty affordable units coming there. That two hundred and fifty affordable units, they're going to range in price from six hundred dollars for a studio onto a little over eighteen hundred dollars for three of them.
Chuck, if you can elaborate a little bit more. You talked about the um retail company that's helping, helping to shape what um entertainment and retail industries that we would bring into the city. How can residents become a part of that? How can they share their input and their concern about what they would like to see in terms of entertainment in our city?
This was not wrong, not playing. Um, over on this side, because I didn't have enough to sit over there, but what you're going to see, this is a survey for uh urban enterprise zone. In our urban enterprise zone, this is considered our opportunity zone. So they're here to tell us what you would like to see in our downtown area, what you would like to see happen along South Avenue in a main corridor. So if you could tell us there, what you want, type of businesses you would like to see subtracted, you want to see things like a show, what you want in terms of restaurants, beautification, that's what we're looking for input on. When we have our retail recruiters, there's going to be other opportunities that we're going to come out and also do different charrettes and recreation centers for that.
And Director, can you also expand? Um, you mentioned for sale townhomes in the second ward. Can you talk about where those homes are going to be located and what kind of assistance the city will be providing?
So the for sale townhomes are located along uh South Avenue, five twenty South Avenue. That's right across from the E Paul Building. In terms of down payment assistance, it's going to be a total of at least thirty thousand dollars in a down payment assistance per home. So we expect these homes to be under four, five hundred thousand. They'll range in price between four fifty and four hundred and ninety thousand. And the down payment assistance, again, it's going to be at least thirty thousand dollars. That's what we have though. We are also looking to partner with H M F A as well as other major projects.
And as the down payment assistance to a Plainfield house?
Yes, we will have to prove that you are a Plainfield resident and is for for time on fire.
Next question, please.
Hello, I'm Robin Montoni, I'm with Terrace. Um, my question is about rent stabilization. While I own a home, I was concerned with the drastic amount that rent went up. I have family members and friends that live in apartments on Front Street. They went anyway, anywhere from eight hundred to a thousand because they use the aerial rent to increase. And I think that rent stabilization should have been something done prior to the bringing to those new properties being built. Um, I'm just concerned about homelessness in Plainfield. Um, also with the economy and the direction it's going, is a property tax free something that we consider if we go into a recession? I also have questions about zoning because I'm interested in putting something in my backyard and I just want to know who to talk to. Um, you mentioned business grants, also who to contact for that? Um, yep.
Well, you did this with a lot of things. So we're going to start with the
So I'm going to answer rent control and the property tax question. Um, then I'm going to pass it on. We'll take it piecemeal. So in terms of rent control, we have the same concerns as you, which is why we crafted an ordinance. However, what you're saying about the new apartments being built, statutorily in New Jersey, rent control would not impact those buildings because for thirty years from either, either the length of your mortgage or thirty years, you are exempt. And so it wouldn't hit those buildings anyway, which is why what we're doing now, we put forward an ordinance, but it exempts many of the buildings that people are concerned about. So what we're doing now is we're working with D C A, who is the organizer of this statute for the state, to see if we could do anything ab- about that exemption, because essentially that exemption is going to make this ordinance not as impactful as our intent. So we are working with D C A to see what can be done about that. It is, it is an issue. We're definitely aware that the older buildings are using newer buildings' rents to create their rents. Um, but we want to make sure that the ordinance is going to have the impact that we desire to have. And with this exemption, it's very problematic. Um, in terms of the property tax, we tw- both twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, I believe, were negative years on the municipal side. But you have to remember that when you get your bill, it's not, you get, you're getting a bill that is made up of the municipal side, the school side, and the county. So, you know, we can do what we can do, but we also, there's obviously two variables we can't control. So I believe we had two years of negative and then we had two years in the twos. We're crafting our budget right now. We're of course looking for, you know, somewhere in between negative and two, which has been our pattern. And um, we, I, I can tell you we are as lean as possible. And we're, we're very well aware that of what the financial situation is that's current and that's coming. And we are thoughtful of that in everything that we do for the budget.
So i- if I may add, in terms of that budget, you know, as you just got by negative, the business administrator is simply saying that taxes actually were decreased for two years and stabilized for the last two years. And so we have really been very conscious about property taxes and the need for us to keep property taxes stable. And that would be a commitment and a lot of that would make possible as a result of the pilot revenues that are being generated from these economic development projects. And so our goal is to continue the stabilization of taxes as we've done for the last four years. Other parts of your
Um, as far as zoning, you go to five oh eight Watchon Avenue and ask for the zoning officer there. So anytime you want to do anything from offense to addition, always start with that. In terms of the business assistance, if you come over to Economic Development, which is in City Hall, five fifteen Watchon Avenue, room two oh six, we'll be able to help you there. But if you go to our website, on our website, there is a link if you click on Economic Development that says Business Assistance and it talks about anything from what we offer to U Z grant, sign a facade program, to also when we partner with the New Jersey Economic Development Administration, that they offer small business lease assistance. So depending on what you're looking for, start there and then come in and talk to us about it.
Good morning. Uh, good evening, everyone. I, I'm Annette Long from thirteen thirty Randolph Road and I'm a resident of the Randolph. And my question, the mayor probably might remember me from last year at Senior Citizens Center. I had a question about transparency about this rehab center that's going to be uh on the premises of the Randolph. And now I understand additionally, there's going to be a charter school. So can you give some transparency on that? Bring us up to date on what's going on in our facility?
So I will check in as well as our Economic Development Director. It would be total transparency as far as what's been happening at the Millenburg campus is concerned. Um, Rutgers has acquired one building on the campus. Rutgers is exempt from local zoning and there is a medical facility there that takes care of people with um substance abuse issues, people who have some issues in terms of mental, you know, stability and things of that sort. All things that are desperately needed, whether you're talking about in Plainfield or in any community, um, USA. We have people that have some mental health crises that need treatment, need to be taken care of, as well as other people who might have substance abuse issues. And Rutgers, a state institution, thought of an idea to establish a facility which they were exempt from our local zoning. And that facility is at Millenburg Campus, operating with no issues as far as we know, nothing that's been brought to our attention. But that's our healthcare facility and it's been dispensing healthcare from all that I've known and I've seen and earned effective manner of taking care of people who have those needs. In terms of the other part about, I think you mentioned charter school, right?
Yes.
Will you respond to that as well?
So behind the Randolph, if you recall, over where the old Millenburg emergency room area, there's still about a hundred to a hundred forty square feet that haven't been developed. So behind you, there's a five thousands, there's an ambulatory surgical center there where they perform surgeries. There's several doctor's offices in there. Recently, there's been a partnership between the City of Plainfield, King University, and College of Chief to have a health profession center developed there. That health profession center is going to start where the old emergency room entrance is. So it's going to be on the first floor. It's also going to go up to part of the second floor and they're looking at if they're going to occupy any parts of the basement. But it's going to have in terms of college achieved, it's going to be equipped K through twelve education that's going to focus on the healthcare professions and then also post-secondary. Post-secondary education is going to be hosted by King University. We're also looking at, this is something that came out of one of our um market analysis that that's a health complex. We are also in need of additional urgent care. So there will be an additional urgent care facility.
Hi, my name's Carol. I was former Plainfield resident for twenty years, left and found out that I have a place where I can come back and I'm a bit back. So I'm also at the Randolph. Just for clarity for me, the section that, where the emergency room is now is down the hill. I call it down the hill because there's separation. And are you saying that the part that's going to be taken care of, the rehab part, that's the other building that's down on that side? So College of Chief would be the back side of the Randolph where the old emergency room was, that's attached to the building?
Yes. So and also starting at where you know the columns and then shaped there too, so that part of the building on that.
Okay, so that's a College of Chief, which is great to hear. And that's the, uh, then you also said something else. College of Chief, the punishment would be?
The university.
Okay, so that basically, that part of the building is educationally, somebody stopped, uh, may have been, or I'm sorry. Someone said something else about a second urgent care.
Yes.
Where would that be?
So the urgent care facility, I don't have the floor plans. They're working out the location, but those three entities will be in that though.
Will be in the Randolph building, but the back side would probably not be called the Randolph.
Right.
Before we continue with the questions from the audience, we'll go to one from online.
Okay. Good evening. Addressing the ongoing issue with speeding in Plainfield. First, thank you for your attention to my emails and tentiveness to add a one-speed bump to Sherman Avenue. More to that question.
Director, as in? Um, I'm not sure what
I think, I think she wants you to just speak.
Talk about speeding in general, okay. Yeah, with this year, just like last year, we have, we have, police department has been laser focused on speeding and traffic enforcement in the city. As you see, we have put up numerous stop signs, speed bumps, and we have also increased traffic enforcement. We are continuing to do that. We have everybody trained and I've mentioned this at other meetings. We have a uh zero tolerance for speeding within the city currently. If you look around, we have also used grant funding that we've gotten over the last couple of years. If you look around, we have also used grant funding that we've gotten over the last couple of years to put up permanent radar speed signs in the city. One is actually up on East Third Street now, one is up on Pemberton Avenue, one will be going on West Fourth Street, one will be going on Plainfield Avenue, and there are several other locations in the city, though they are where we are putting these radar speed signs. So, we are actually, it's a problem that we have to attack on several different levels. That's why you see the stop signs, the speed bumps, and the traffic enforcement. We have been working hard at it, it's a work in progress. You will see more results as this year goes on, as these speed signs go up. But we have been, we have been tackling it like every other crime or any other situation in the city head-on. We're not making any excuses, we're going out there, we're doing the work. If people complain about areas, we're going to do everything we can to go to those areas and address those situations in those areas. So, I welcome you to call the police department if you have speeding or any other problems within your part of the city so that we can understand where we need to deploy resources outside of some of the other things that we are doing. And I hope that answers the question.
Director, can you just explain for the residents, what is the procedure when residents on a particular street want a speed bump? What are those procedures?
Well, that's, that's, the speed bump part of it is really Director Dapney's foretext, I'll let him explain.
Right. So, that's a good question. Speed bumps, when we do the speed bumps, we do a traffic study. Analysis done, see that if there warrants a speed bump, what we place them. But we do check with traffic data etc. that we receive to see that's something that's needed. Currently, in the City of Plainfield, we have over 60 speed bumps. And we're scheduled to put, coming this summer, another 24 in different areas of the city. So we're addressing, this is one of the best traffic calming measures we can take, put out there, to the four-way stop sign around there now. So anyone that's looking for that, that's something you can just call us, give us some information. We're right now and we're able to assess the speed bump, so we've done our traffic study. But we try to get quite a few rolls when we do that, because when they come in to do a study, you want to have like four or five rolls or better to show that why it warrants that. But we do try, study every which way to make sure the speed bumps needed, we'll put it there. Sometimes we extend the speed bumps after days, so we take that very seriously. And again, it's a major traffic calming measure that we try to put in place to address that, again, long before we stop. We work with the police department to address everything. They meditate very seriously, make sure that we want to make sure we address the speeding issues across the city. We know we try, we can't, those are bad habits, right? But we do everything we can to, to make the city safe with speed bumps, traffic, four-way traffic signs, etc. We're working with the police department.
And if I can add one to that, with the four-way stop signs, we, the police department gets a great deal of complaints about intersections and requesting four-way stop signs at those intersections. What we do after that is we conduct a traffic study, look at accidents at those intersections over the last three or four years. Based on that study, we will make determinations if we are going to put four-way stop signs there or maybe if we're going to try something else. If it's a county roadway, we may work with the county to try to travel it there. There are several ways that we combat these different things, but they, they seem to have been quite effective. But like I said, it's still a work in progress, we still have work to do, but rest assured, we are working on it.
And to add to that, I'm sorry, because traffic, it's a major issue that's going on. We have a Safe Streets slash Broke that we're doing, it's a federal grant that we have. We have the $100,000 grant, we gotta match by 20% under $100,000. We're just going to measure everything going on with all our intersection across the city. It's going to be great for us, we're just wanting to touch on everything, intersections, etc. To improve everything, delight in everything, all intersections. To prevent any fatalities in the area, that's what we're trying to do. And there's going to be major funding involved with this to address all those issues. There's a major grant, federal grant coming that we are dealing with right now, to do everything. We're putting a major action plan together to address all of that, in addition to everything that we're currently doing. So we're taking this very seriously, you know, across the city, everything that's.
And that's one of the important things about this, this administration. It's very easy to work with everybody up here. I tell people all the time, Dapney and Amity is the one to punch. If we're looking to try, try to do things in terms of traffic, all the problems in the city, you contact his office or you contact my office and we work to get those things done. Thank you.
Let's see if we have any other questions online.
Okay, we do. Thank you for the empty police car on Bradford. People are still running the signs, we need more police presence. And the other one is, what is the city doing about over the curb parking? Taxi cabs making illegal U-turns on any street in the city, quote traffic?
Okay, those, those are matters for me. As, as people know, my, my traffic unit has been bolstered. We have a, a seven-day-a-week traffic unit as opposed to what we have had in the past. We're out there looking for issues such as this. Once again, four-way stop signs, stop signs work if people are willing to obey them. What we do is if we get complaints like this over every place, I'll put it on our car out there so people are running the stop sign and they'll start getting tickets. And we do that to make sure that everybody begins to comply with whatever's going on in those intersections. Like anything else, you always have bad actors. That's because we put up signs doesn't mean that everybody's going to obey them. So, with practice and with us keep enforcing the laws, we will make that difference. In terms of tactics, making U-turns and things of that nature, those are issues that we can only address if we're, we're Johnny on the spot. By the time we get to somewhere and somebody is doing that, once again, it's a bad actor. And we will work as best we can to address those issues. I have a lot of cops in the downtown area, the downtown area has been a major focus. Other police department, they're giving me these, make sure I take care of the downtown area and I'm very serious about it. So any, any violations or any things that you see, please report them or we will work our hardest to get it taken care of. Thank you.
We'll go back to the audience.
Hello, my name is Abby St. Marie, I live at 6001 Watchon Avenue. I'd like, first of all, I'd like to say this is a great idea to have a media even reward, so I'm appreciative of that. I'd also like to thank the city for placing the speed bumps and stop signs on Watchon between Taro and Woodland. It's cut down the accidents, it's cut down the speeding, it's, I feel a lot safer. I'd like to ask a question, I don't know if this is totally appropriate, but has anyone else noticed a white truck going up and down Watchon? I like us in a parade with flags that say "Chump" and American flag several times a day. I don't, I, I, it's not, I don't feel comfortable, this is the going on very much. It's a white truck, a pickup, several times a day, up and down Watchon.
Uh, what time of day is that occurring today?
It's not, I can't say it's?
No specific time?
I can't say it's a particular time, it's just several times a day sometimes. Sometimes one, you know, and on the weekends. Driving slowly as though it's a parade and it's been going on for months.
If you see that truck, we, how consider it to be a suspicious vehi- suspicious vehicle? If you see that truck and you're concerned, you pick up the phone, call the police department. I'll have the units in the area respond and we'll find out what's going on, why this truck appears to need to be driving up and down Watchon Avenue.
Thank you. Also, also, there was a policeman in the community. Um, it was a, I, I was told a couple of years ago that he had been assigned to this area and I saw him often and now no more, so I, I was told that there was some sort of initiative. I felt so safe when I would look out and see the police car or see a policeman get out his car. He was someone who grew up in town and was very friendly, so I wonder what happened to that initiative? Also, I'd like to hear more about the project, the proposed project we're performing. And then my last question is, I'm a senior citizen, since I retired, pay a heck of a lot of money in taxes, as those of you who are homeowners know. What am I getting for my taxes? Work with me, I'm a senior citizen. Thank you.
I'll, I'll start with the question I can answer. In terms of the police officer that was in the area, that was, that was one of the detectives in C O P. He will be back out in that area, he's been assigned to downtown for, for quite some time. I will be deploying more people in that area just to make you feel comfortable. But rest assured, even though you may not see police officers out walking around, they do patrol every area of the city, they may ride throughout the entire city every day. There are officers in marked, in unmarked cars and some who are in uniform and out of uniform. So, even if you don't see them, rest assured, we are out there. And I have drones in the air, so.
And in terms of what you're getting for your taxes. We spend a great deal of your money, of all of our money, each and every day to provide services to all of our residents. Um, we have driven down crime by about 52% all day about. All violent crimes down significantly. So we invest in law enforcement, we invest in public safety, we invest in public spaces. Um, and we have transformed all of our parks for the benefit of all age groups. We've also created a cultural gem, I would say, in the city by way of the PIPAC, where a lot of our seniors, they go there for exercise classes, they go there to enjoy jazz concerts. We've also invested in our senior center downtown where we have programs each and every day. So, we have done a great deal providing services to all of our residents so that people know that their dollars are being spent wisely. So I know it might be difficult for any number of individuals to pinpoint one or two or three services where they can say that I have benefited from that. But the entire community benefits from the dollars that we spend each and every day. It is one of the reasons why we have seen a huge taking investments in our city. It's one of the reasons why we are attracting people from our neighboring towns who are coming into our city to enjoy what Plinsey has to offer because we have been, we've addressed that issue of safety in our city. And those are some of the ways that we spend your tax dollars. In many other ways, we have been voted a healthy city for six years conceptively because we invest in healthcare in our city. You can go to our health department, you can get vaccines, you can get all kinds of health services at our Plainfield Health Department and our Plainfield Action Services. We try to take care of the least among us, those folks who are not able to afford things, you know, that others can. And so we fill that gap. So, there's so much that we do to our fire department. It's always there to respond in cases of emergencies. And so the list goes on and on. And so I can assure you that your tax dollars are very well spent. The Peterson Farm, I don't know if you?
Sure, the former Peterson Farm, the open space on Cushion Road. We are actually going to have a charrette in this room on March 31st, it's going to be at 7:00 PM. A we've issued a survey to get input on what the surrounding residents within a half a mile would like to see in that location. So we are going to be presenting the results of that survey. We've heard from about 200 different respondents about what they would like to see, whether you want to see a nature preserve, whether you want to see a community garden, pavilion, walking trails. We're going to talk about that, we're going to talk about what it means in terms of scale and what you would like to see, what it means in terms of operation maintenance and time commitment. So, you're welcome to come back on March 31st in this room at 7:00.
And please know that there is no preconceived concept of Peterson Farm. It's open, it's why we conducted a survey, it's the reason why we're going to have that charrette to get additional input from the community. So what goes at Peterson Farm is what the community wants. And the results of that survey and the charrette will be forwarded to Union County. And the other decision belongs to the county because it's a county park. And we've spoken to the county manager, asking for the presence of representation from the county. And I'm sure that our, our county commissioner for the audience, Rebecca Williams, will be present when we have that charrette, as well as someone else from the county. So, it's an ongoing project and we want to deliver the absolute best project for all of the people of Plainfield especially, the people in that neighborhood, which is why we sent out the survey to 1,005 properties that are within a half mile radius of Peterson Farm. Next question.
Uh, hi, I'm Dan Ross in 1220 Watchon. I'd like to continue the conversation around traffic safety as someone who is a frequent pedestrian around this town. I'd like to follow up some, with something that you said, sir, about speed, speed bumps specifically. Um, there are people that are very much against the four-way stops and the speed bumps. I am not one of those people. Um, they want more reinforcement, which I think would also be nice. But my question is, in terms of some of these things like the speed bumps, eventually, um, those things have to be maintained because, uh, speed bumps, as, as cars drive over them, start to flatten out. On this, on Kensington Avenue, there are about three or four or five, um, speed bumps there and they're about as effective as having an anthill in the middle of the street. So, um, how are these maintained so that these are actually worthwhile after a certain amount of time?
Thanks for, thanks for bringing it to my attention. We didn't, I didn't know that, but we will look into the, those speed bumps that you referred to that you're saying you're in bad shape. But we do make sure we have one to maintain, because that's what happens, it's like a street, a speed bump. So they do have to be maintained. So we keep so much funding up, have the budget there to address those issues if that does happen. So we do monitor our speed bumps to, to ensure that they're safe, because what, what has happened, right? We don't maintain them, so they're out there, so we, we maintain speed bumps, we always look at them. So those on Kensington to refer to, we were looking through that to see what's going on to address the asphalt issue, to make sure that they're done right.
Could I jump in on that real quick? The, the speed bumps on Kensington Avenue, because of neighborhood complaints, were shaved down. When they were first put in, they were very high. And as the neighbors or the residents complained about those speed bumps, they kept being cut down, cut down, cut down to where they basically are where they are today. So that is the reason for that. Yeah, and, and I must say this, in terms of speed bumps or stop signs, everybody's not going to be a fan. I, I will say this, the majority of homeowners that I speak to and residents that I speak to in the city are very much in favor of them, they're very much in favor of any type of traffic calming measure because we want to have a law down in town, we want to have people obey the law, we want them to follow the rules of the road. So whatever we have to do to make people follow the rules of the road, we will do that. But I've said this before, speed bumps, stop signs, address issues where I can deploy officers other places. We have, we have zero homicide rate in the city last year. That hasn't happened here in probably 70 years. I attribute that to all of the things that we do because it is a joint, it's, it's a joint participation here. Everybody works together, so it helps us, it helps us solve problems. So whereas, I may not put an officer sitting at an intersection, I may have him somewhere on West End or another part of town addressing a love type of crime, but that speed bump or that stop sign is doing the work of an officer by them not being there, by slowing people down, by making them stop, by making them follow the rules of the road. So that's, that's the point that I think people miss sometimes when they talk about the quote-unquote "bad side" of these stop signs and speed bumps. They act as, basically as parts of the police department and parts of public works where we can get things done, but I don't have to have officers at all these locations because these things are taking care of those things for us. It's kind of like the radar signs we're putting up now. Every time somebody sees one of those radar signs, it just starts flashing, you know? I don't have to have a cop there for that. So it works, it works hand-in-hand is what I'm trying to say.
And by the way, the polls come in every day for them, requests of speed bumps and four-way stops. We get the polls every day for that. So it's a major traffic calming measure that, that we address and we're going to continue to address. Make the city safer, and better for everyone, so.
Okay, I'm going to move to an online question. This one is a comment, so I'll, I'll do two. Radar speed signs would be great at the intersection of Field and Randolph. Radar speed signs would be great at the intersection of Field and Randolph. Cars are constantly running these stop signs. So we will take note of that, that was Field and Randolph. And the second question is, what about people leaving trash and recycling cans out seven days a week with no street cleaning? So I think Director Louise.
Whenever we get, uh, we have inspectors that ride around and also we get calls from the residents. We will notify the property owner, we also stop over and drop off their schedule because sometimes, uh, as individuals may have the collection dates a little mixed up, we wanna be sure that they're aware of the actual, uh, scheduled dates.
And as to Field and Randolph, I know that we placed a four-way stop sign there maybe about a year, two years ago. Because of the accidents and the complaints that we were having regarding that intersection. And if people are just roaming through that intersection, then I would ask our police director to make sure that we pay close attention so that those who are not willing to obey the law will receive tickets. And it would be a contribution not only to our budget, but to public safety more.
Yes, sir.
Another question.
Uh, good evening, I'm Jeff Spellman from eleven fifty-one Presham. Um, another famous intersection, Belvedere and East Seventh, which I believe is the, uh, town road and the county road. Um, is very dangerous for pedestrians. We had a neighbor who was critically injured there. And I was wondering if there's any activities to do traffic calming or light or something there to make that a safer intersection.
Thanks for, I, I was thinking that is, can't remember off the top of my head, is the pedestrian signs there on Seventh Street? I'm trying to remember. Are pedestrian signs there, but they're not lighting?
This is, this, that's, this is all gonna take place this sometime in April. The county's gonna start doing everything to do with that with those intersections all over there. The Seventh and Belvedere is one of them. And they have some plant statues, not the traffic signal, but they're gonna do some rumble strips for the sector and everything there. And add some law safety measures, to address all the issues in that intersection.
I just wanted to add to that, um, yesterday, councilwoman contacted me about that. So I spoke to our, uh, county engineer, Rick Matias, and, um, specifically about that question that I think you asked. And, um, he told me that, um, indeed he is working with the city and part of it, uh, the county's going to be, um, doing some timely changes with the light at Seventh and, um, and as well, because that might be part of it. And, and as you mentioned, the rumble strip or the, or the narrowing strips as well, so, um, county works with the city, thank you.
And there's gonna be five intersections that are addressing the county, uh, in April.
Hi, uh, good evening, uh, Zine Gray, eleven thirty-one Torsey Place, Plainfield, New Jersey. So first I wanna say thank you all for having this town all meeting. I think it's great to hear some of my neighbors' concerns and also like just understand sort of like what all my neighbors are facing. So I just wanted to like opine about the, uh, trash collection. I think it's, uh, to Mr. John Louise, he's doing a wonderful job. I think the trash collection services have definitely improved. Um, I'm, I'm seeing sort of like my neighbors sort of responding to it. So I just wanna acknowledge that all the efforts that you've put in in order to make, uh, roll P M U A, P M M A, all those different changes, they're seeing a positive impact. But one of the things I wanted to also possibly see is some sort of like food waste, um, diversion program. Because one of the things my neighbors got, uh, that made them very happy about the P M M A bill in particular was that they got a five percent reduction. I would like to see that five percent reduction permanent, uh, by seeing ways we can divert food waste from the trash and, you know, less food waste going to incinerators. That means basically less, uh, labor that you're using, less wear and tear of business that you're using. So that means, you know, looking to see if we can institute permanent, uh, five percent or five-eight percent reductions in the bill for people that use food waste diversion programs. I see it in other channels like Moncler in Jersey City. I would like to possibly see it here in order to save my neighbors' money, bye.
And one thing I wanna just put out there is that we've been focusing on a lot of areas. Uh, when we took the P M U A over, there was, uh, a lot of operational issues that we had to get right. And I think for your comments, one of the areas that focused on by team was recycling. And I know you're talking about food, but just to put it out there, our recycling numbers since we took over had gone up seventeen percent. And that's a big accomplishment because, as you said, whatever we can remove from the waste stream is a plus not only for the environment, but the financial piece. And we're working with the county because the county, uh, we work hand-to-hand with them on a lot of different initiatives. And there's a lot of things out there. Uh, but I want to try to get, you know, for, better word, the lower line of fruit where it was recycling as far as car doors and things like that. But there's a lot of things. We just got into recycling, uh, cooking oil. And anyone that has cooking oil, a lot of times you have, have been at home, you have a large amount of cooking oil. Um, you can bring it to our facility at Rock Ed, ninety-five Rock Ed, and it's a free, uh, service, you can drop it off free of charge. You just tell the gentleman at the gate that you have cooking oil. Or there's a bunch of other items that we, uh, we accept with no charge. But we are looking at not only the recycling oil and things like that, but also the, the food.
Hi, my name is Pat Wolfen, you guys know me. Uh, and I, I'm just, uh, as a segue to, uh, community health, uh, I've raised the issue of electric vehicle charging stations placed throughout the city. Uh, I'm gonna possibly probably keep reminding you guys about this. Neighborhood townships like Westfield have like gated those machines throughout the city at the train stations and, and, uh, particular stores. Uh, it, uh, it's a, it's an amenity that attracts young professionals to the city. We have a lot of developments going on in the city. Uh, it's getting more dense, it's getting, there's more traffic. And, uh, electric vehicles attract young professionals to the city. So I'm trying to find out, uh, if there's any update on the R F P. There are no, uh, the mayor requested regards to getting some electric vehicle charging stations for public use, uh, placed throughout the city. Can you guys give me an update?
Okay, so thank you, that we have not forgotten about you. Definitely, we wanna consider sustainability. So I'm just gonna talk about throughout the city. So with most of our developments, there is a requirement to install an electric charging station. So all of that, all of our developments that are built, there is at least fifteen percent for charging stations that are there. What you're talking about is our destinations, looking at our train stations, looking at our downtown Main Street quarters. We are still looking to do that, we are looking at electric vehicle shuttle. We have opted into a program with the E D A, the Economic Development Administration, where they support commercial clean air efforts. So we're going after those grants, working with the developers to get those stations. So identifying with the routes, we're still working on. It is a part of our plan.
And it's coming through an R F P?
It has to come through an R F P.
Alright, thank you, thank you very much.
And I remind you that Westfield in those towns you're referring to did not go through that process. We have to be guided by the local public contract law.
How do you get there, they got the machines?
Hi, good evening, well-fathered, well-intended, to Worth Drive. I'd just like to clarify the date for the charrette. The information that actually went out was, uh, April first, and you mentioned the thirty-first?
It is March thirty-first.
I mean, March thirty-first, but the information went out and said April first.
It is going to be, there's gonna be a revised flyer. It should have been distributed again. The reason why we changed from April first to March thirty-first is the well-known the other.
Uh, just before that, and if you are going to send out information, we've had issues where a lot of the, uh, residents in that area have not been receiving communication. So I'm not sure exactly what's going on. I've been the one that's been informing, uh, a lot of the residents in the area as to the changes that has been taking place. So again, if you can just try to figure out what's going on with these, uh, communications that's been going out.
Sure, and I also know that, um, Director Clayton Hunt, there are gonna be mobile calls. There was a set rule calls that went out to let them know about the change in the date. But as we get closer to the date, there will be more rule calls specific to the residents that are within the half a mile.
So you could just to clarify, it's gonna be March thirty-first, not April first?
March thirty-first in this room at seven P M.
And this room is not available by April first?
Let's go to an on, let's go to an online question, you're starting to build up. Okay. At the first ward meeting, I asked about an occupancy enforcement within the city. Does the city have a plan to address this issue? Alleged code enforcement, okay.
In terms of code enforcement and occupancy, if there is an incident, if we have an address, we do go to the location to see if we have an occupancy issue. Then that landlord or property owner can be cited for that.
So we need assistance from residents in order for us to know where these alleged, um, illegal occupancies are occurring. Because we don't go around, we don't have the manpower to go to every street, every neighborhood to look for that. But if we receive complaints about illegal occupancy, we will respond.
And what would you call inspections?
So yes, the, on, on the website, under economic development, you can either use my email or you can go to inspections, give us the address and say that there's an occupancy issue.
And, and we'll do that as long as we receive the complaint. But we don't have a policy, we will not have a policy, where we selectively go to this neighborhood or that neighborhood, knock on the door, how many people are living in your own? We don't do that, we can't do that. Next question, please.
Good, good evening, Justin Gentles. Um, you know, police and fire have done a great job the last couple of years in our community. My question is, who's responsible for emergency medical within the, the Plainfield, within your administration? Who oversees that and who maintains accountability as far as response times and things of that nature? I just don't know who is over it.
So, um, our EMS is handled by J F K and also by, by Union County. They have it even split, they both have contracts that are grant-funded within the city and they both have vehicles here twenty-four-seven. We, meaning me, the, myself, the police director and the fire director, meet with them, with the leadership teams from both J F K and Union County once a month on a Zoom meeting to go over what that month entailed, if any issues came up. Every week, we get a report that tells how many calls came in, who answered the calls, et cetera. And every month, we get a big report that has all of the calls, whether they were basic life services, advanced life services, what happened, what the response time was, et cetera, what the average response time is, et cetera. Um, from the date that they started these contracts to now, the average response time is significantly better than the state average. What, what we hold them to for our contract is ten minutes. They're more towards six, um, but they, anything that's over ten is something that we discuss in our monthly meeting because those are, you know, uh, above, above and beyond what we find acceptable. But they are very few and far between and there, we go over them and, and how that happened each month. But you could reach out to me if you have any questions on the EMS.
Good evening, my name is Lee Robinson of eight twenty-five Berkeley Avenue. And the first thing I wanted to say is I appreciate everyone coming out and answering questions. It's good to see a lot of neighbors in friendly faces here. Um, I did wanna blow up on one question that, uh, Richard brought up earlier about the deer population in Plainfield. And I think just for a point of clarification, given your response there, it sounded like, what I couldn't tell was if there was ju- no jurisdiction for us to have a plan for calling the deer population or if it was just contentious so we didn't have one or if the county was responsible, so then whatever hunting, vote hunting was happening in the winter months was kind of, was it. And the only reason I'm asking this is I grew up in Montana, I moved to New Jersey a few years ago. And if you don't have a natural predator, which we didn't at the time in a small city, they have a tendency to get diseases and then at one point you could have a booming population and then they all had a disease at once and it can, can be a problem. I just wanted to know if there was any long-term plan or is there wildlife officers in Union County who can care with, I guess, the, the population?
The reason is the county's responsibility is because the color happens in the only county parks that are in the city. The properties that are owned by the county, um, namely Cedarwood Park and Greenwood Park. And I think they used to be some of one font at, in the area of Peterson Farm. I'm sure that still happens. But it's done by the county because it's always county properties where this occurs. We don't have parks in the city where we can conduct that kind of an operation. And by we, I am talking about the city of Plainfield. So we have no other program that I can point to that will help us to control the deer population other than the color that is done by the county. Now, if there's anyone in this audience who knows of other methods that can be used, that the city can entertain, we will gladly entertain any and all methods that can be safely carried out by the city. Because I want those individuals who would like to see, uh, reduce their population. Because of all the issues that we are aware of, the complaints that we gain from our residents, and anything that we can do to control the deer population, uh, this administration is willing to do.
Is there a target, is there a target population thinning? Or is, I just was wondering about that. Because one of the issues that I've seen is when I'm walking, I, I take frequent walks around the neighborhood, I see some of our neighbors feeding deer. And I'm a little surprised by that because I don't think of them as, that's, but apparently that is something that is like, so I don't have a public health campaign or like some sort of outreach? Or is there a target population where if we don't, I, I don't know, but I get, I'm just confused.
Now, when you say target population, what do you mean?
Is there a target thinning population that the county holds? So it's like, you know, the X percent of the whatever, like we have, you know, the population is X, can we cut it down to X here? Because it's definitely increasing just by, uh, you know, casual observation, which is not scientific.
I don't have the answer. Um, County Commissioner Rebecca Williams will try to get us more information on that question.
Yes, okay, we can go online. There are one, two, three. There are four here from the same person that are kind of back to backs, I'm not gonna read them all. I'm assuming they're all related. What is the update with college achieved? They're currently under investigation by the state. Are, are we, why are we moving forward with allowing them to expand? The community was told that harder schools would offer a better choice for our children in graduation rates. Was the metric used to show they are doing better? But test scores are the same. Finally, I'm having an issue with an O B R request being responded to. I'm waiting on a development, but I think that was taken care of today, so we can move past that. And then why can't we move forward with the rent control ordinance? To give relief to people who live in the older buildings, we can start there and to, and figure out the rest later. I could respond to the rent control piece. So I, I understand what is being said about, you know, just exempt all the new properties that have the high rents and, um, only deal with the older buildings. Our concern about that is, and we have a, a roundtable discussion coming up with some of the landlords of those older buildings. We're very concerned that some of these landlords will not be able to keep up with the maintenance of the building or keep the building to the standard that people are used to when they have, when they have this implemented. And so we have a roundtable discussion set up to discuss this with them. I mean, they are older buildings, so if a boiler's gonna break, it's, it's not, it's probably not gonna be in a new. I mean, they are older buildings, so if a boiler is going to break, it's probably not going to be in a new building. It's going to be in one of the, of the older buildings. And expensive things obviously tend to happen to older buildings. So we haven't, they asked, they requested a discussion with us and we're open to hearing what their concerns are. So we will be meeting with them, I believe the date is mid to late April in a roundtable discussion and see what their concerns are. We really want to make sure that we are not harming residents by, you know, and making these buildings in not, in not good condition. Also, I just want to inform everybody that in this ordinance, there's also language talking about the smaller buildings, four units and less. And we are very conscious not to hurt Plainfield residents who happen to also be landlords. There are many Plainfield residents that are landlords of small buildings. In fact, I can't do the math on top of that. But twelve hundred out of seventeen hundred, more than twelve hundred out of seventeen hundred are Plainfield residents. So what is that, two thirds, three quarters, something, you know? And so we do not want to impact those people in a negative way by, you know, they've done, they've invested in their own community, they live here, they're owner occupied building, owner occupied houses or small buildings. And we want to make sure that we are being fair to them. They are also our residents, they're also taxpayers. And so those are people we want to have a discussion with too before we move forward on anything. So there's, there's multiple different facets of potential issues that we want to make sure are fully fleshed out before anything becomes law. And that's, that was the answer to that, the things about college achieve.
Hopefully you answered college achieve, um, if you have. She did share those numbers with me and so of the properties, one thousand two hundred and sixty-seven are owned by Plainfield residents. So to her point, not wanting to negatively impact Plainfield residents who own these properties is of concern. And then there's another two hundred and seventy of the buildings that are five or more units that are also owned by Plainfield residents. So they're being very cautious and making sure our Plainfield residents aren't being impacted and they can provide that data.
And so things are not always as they seem on the surface. We want all policies to be heard. And so it's not just waiting to hear from the state, but we want all policies to be part of the conversation. As far as college achieve, the only response that I will give, and I don't know if our director has any other information, but regarding any state investigation, we don't get involved, we don't comment, that is not for us. And so any investigation that is supposedly happening, that's not for us. We don't get involved with that.
Just adding to the rent stabilization issue, I think just like a homeowner, they want our taxes to go up one percent, five percent, or have a drastic increase. I think we have to think about renters the same way. We can't just say that because this person is an owner and a resident of Plainfield, that it's okay to throw eight hundred, five hundred, two hundred to a rental property. So feel like other towns like Edison or they have a percentage and I think we don't be fair to, to cap it because it is pretty ridiculous. And getting New York renters, they are used to paying a lot of money for a very little space. So it's okay for them to come and pay thirty-five hundred dollars for an apartment. It's not okay for people who already been living here to have such a drastic increase.
We will take input from all sides. You made some very valid points, we respect the information that you shared and we will give everyone the opportunity to be at the table so that the administration council can hear from all sides.
Hello, good evening, thanks for calling this forum, very good forum. Michael Pyne, eleven hundred Evergreen Avenue. I just want to thank Dr. Assissons and Ms. Fields. I had an issue with a neighbor on the corner of Park and Martin. Constant litter, right? Beer, cases of beer sitting out there for weeks on the planet. And so I did call inspections and they eventually came. And then it was sitting here, thank you, absolutely sent you. But my, my problem with that is habitual. And I shouldn't have to report it, you know, monthly, whatever case. So is there something in place with the city to notify either the homeowners or landlords to make sure their tenants understand not to litter, right? Or, you know, even having to write, whether it's garbage cans and so on. And I do know that Ms. Field, when you responded by email, you uncovered other things, right? They had a sofa, I didn't even know that was going on. So I think the city, you know, spring is here, right? Tomorrow's first day of spring. We have a beautiful city, okay? But we need to make sure that others that come into our city maintain it. Thank you.
So I'm not sure if the question was answered as far as we have a program to notify either new tenants or new landlords of what the policy is or what they should be doing with their tenants. Someone else, someone also asked about the, you know, pulling back their apartment receptibles and recyclables. Is that something that we send out to all our new incoming residents?
So I'm just going to respond about the property maintenance. So in terms of property maintenance, whenever we have, for example, a landlord that may be looking to rent out a property, they are notified of the property maintenance requirements. We also talk to the tenants if there's any changes that they have, it's published on our website. What we have started doing and we will do in the spring, for example, particularly in our downtown area, partnering with our special improvement district, we are going to have inspectors walk around and talk to some of the business owners and the property owners where we're seeing where people might be dumping on their sites.
As far as notification, this is what's very important about these town hall meetings. I just took a note, I think we're going to include a little something in our mailers to just get people aware. When we do get calls for new cans or new customers, we do give them a news and don'ts kind of little flyer. We're looking at a lot of different things. One thing I want to add on litter though, short-term things like this, but I've got a long-term plan that we're working with the schools because it's very important to teach the young kids, the little ones, how important it is to pick up paper and stuff. So this earth day, we plan on having something at the transfer station for first graders, second graders, kind of plan to see that, you know, the environment's very important and the papers that they see on the ground, then maybe their mommies and daddies or their friends have thrown there. It's not good for the environment and I want to show them the facility and where all that stuff ends up. So I'm hoping that we're planning to see long-term if we can have such large issues with litter. But we all know it's a problem and a lot of times it's the adults that are doing it. And it's just very, very, can't find the word, but at least I can't say it publicly.
And in terms of litter and things being dropped on the ground, I was in a part of the second ward of Little Water Bow and this homeowner talked about those newspaper ads that you often don't find at your doorstep, that you don't ask for, you don't look at, and they become litter on much. And so the only way to stop that, because these companies have, of course, a right, there's a phone number on those bags. If you call that number, they will stop placing those paper ads at your door. So I encourage you to call that number that is on the bag and you will not receive those ads anymore. I used to get them, I haven't gotten those in years because I made that phone call. So I encourage you to do the same, that will go a long way to help. Next question.
Hi, I'm Sandy Gordowski, I live on Southern Celine Avenue, just down from the Spoke School. And I have several comments. With the deer, I actually went online and did some hunting a few years back. And there was a report of research being done for birth control with the deer. And it was happening in one of the more wealthy towns perhaps. And I wondered if maybe, if it's still ongoing, could investigate how it was being done. Because though we don't have a county park maybe close to me, the deer think mine is, I've had ten and twelve there, I've had little ladies born, had someone come and say, hey, we've got some deer, Brederbisky Foundation here. And I think they just think it's where they have to come all the time now and I shoo them out, but what can we do? In reference to the food recycling, I've read that in New York City and some of the areas, they have a composting thing where people have a bucket, they can put the food and waste that they would throw out, maybe rotten or something, and they put it in for composting and I don't know, does the city compost the leaves and grass that people throw out? Because maybe it'd be a way of doing it. I have a bucket, I keep stuff in, I have a neighbor who composts and has something to do it. She has gorgeous garden, I gotta say. I just don't have the energy to turn it. Okay, let's see, that was composting, that was deer. I grew up in a little town of a thousand in Maine. We didn't have a street light or a stop sign, but we had a lot of intersection. And it was just the rule, car on the right goes and then you go around, that car, that car, that car, that car. And maybe we need to teach people how a four-stop intersection should be handled. Maybe, you know, they're realizing. And in reference to the litter, you're right, not far from the drain station and by the type of litter, things that had probably illicit drugs, backboard, whatever. And I am out and cleaning it out on a regular basis, but I can't keep it up with this, as towards. And in our little town of a thousand, from kindergarten right through twelfth grade, we had to police around that homeroom desk. You went there all day, not even change rooms, but you were responsible. No paper, no litter around your desk. And a recess, I don't know if kids get recess anymore, but if they do, we gave up a recess regularly, every few months and had to police the county, the school grounds. Each class had an area, they had to make sure it passed their homeroom teacher's inspection. And you know, I don't ever remember litter being on the streets of my hometown. And we, I don't think we really had anyone going around cleaning anything up. The best they did was to clean up the excess sand after a winter of a lot of ice and snow. So I just think maybe if we could teach our kids, maybe they'd teach their family members who didn't grow up with it to not litter. Thank you for all that we do.
Well, thank you so very much. Yeah, we thank you well. And the doctors you asked a question, wait until the microphone gets to you before you speak because people are not able to hear you online.
Yes, the city of Plainfield, all the trees collected in the curbside collections, Mr. Dab and his team does, comes to our facilities along with residents from surrounding towns to drop off the debris at the transfer station at Rock End. All of that goes to the county facility and two or three other disposal sites for composting. We do keep a small amount at the transfer station. That's one of the programs we're going to start off in our spring where residents can come and get free compost as much as they want.
I'm going to go.
And in regards to the four-stop signs, ma'am, you're one hundred percent right. Car on the right always has the right way. We've sent that out through social media, you talked about it online. We'll send that information back out again, but you were right about that. And it's something that needs to be done, so we'll do it.
And we're getting close to hitting thirty hours, so keep your questions brief and avoid those lengthy conversations.
Hi, my name's Yota, I'm the owner of Gilt's One Minute. I was here at the last meeting. I heard about buildings and garbage and new restaurants, but I never, I didn't hear nothing how you can save the business, they're here already downtown. Parking situation because every three, four days, the parking station, the pay station in the back is not working. People, they complain, they get a lot of tickets. Actually, I've got a ticket and I pay for permits every month. Because they told me the person who gave the ticket, they didn't go close enough to my card to see my permit on my card. So I don't know what's going on with the development, I don't know what we're supposed to do. Because I did have a lady Saturday, she came at seven o'clock. She placed an order, she tried to park in Front Street, there was no parking anywhere. She went in the back to find parking and I told her what's going on with the lot in the back. And she told me, she was like, if I don't find a parking in Front Street and if I'm not allowed to park in the back, I'm just going to continue going, I'm not going to stop for the business because it's convenient. She's like, I told her that it's going to be a lot behind Supremo. And she was like, I don't have time to waste to go park behind Supremo. Every day, the store's closing, every day people complain, they don't have money to pay their rent. The landlords, they don't want to hear nothing about it. Parking, they don't want to hear nothing about it. So what's the situation, all we have to do to stay in business? Because my next step upon getting my answer, I'm going to call the news to come downtown and see what's going on.
Well. Well, thank you for your question and your concerns as far as parking on Front Street. I suspect that those vehicles that are parked on Front Street are patronizing the businesses that are on Front Street. And that person who couldn't find a park on Front Street and you suggested a person go to the back lot. Parking on Front Street's very limited. So people who are parking on Front Street, they're parking there, they're going to the businesses that are on Front Street. And so there will be times when they wouldn't be able to find a park because people are patronizing the businesses that we want them to do. And so that's one of the reasons why we have the other lots in the back of the stores. So we want to encourage people to use the lots that are in the back of the stores as well, whether it's Lot Eight that's behind, behind the food store, behind the charter school, whether it's the one behind marijuana's or the one behind your establishment. We really want people to park in the lots if they can't find a park on Front Street and walk for two or three minutes to patronize the stores.
The lot behind my restaurant, it's supposed to start building soon, so it's not going to be no lot back there, right?
We have a plan for that and the director can speak to that when that project does get started.
In the interest of time, I'm going to move to an online question. Will the city work more diligently with the state on enforcing the owners of the older apartment buildings about the upkeep of their apartment buildings? So I could partially answer that. That we learned a lesson in the past few years, which was not to rely on the state for inspections, even in buildings that they're responsible for inspecting. And what we took, what we did with that information was we created an ordinance that will have us, will give us the right, does give us the right to inspect every unit every other year. So odd years, some units, even years to others. And this way, we have our eyes. And this way, we have our eyes, um, you know, the state hopefully also is doing their due diligence. But even if that happens to fall by the wayside, we have our own eyes on each unit every other year. And so, we've made a big financial commitment in our code enforcement officers. We have more than double the amount of people that we have in that office so that we could make good on this ordinance. And, um, that is the way that we are, that is the lesson that we learned and that is what we're doing with that information. There's a, the next one is just a comment, so I'm gonna just read it. More enforcement needed at Eighth Street and Central Ave four-way stop. While it was needed, the number of cars that blow through or drove rolling stops still exists. So, that's Eighth Street and Central Ave. Thank you, we will take note of that when we go with it.
We're gonna take this last question from the floor. Did he name Campbell?
Last question.
Thank you. Well, Campbell, I'll make my question brief. I have a very big concern about traffic and congestion. More specifically, I'm concerned about South Avenue. At sunset and during poor visibility, it is very scary driving down South Avenue. Cars parked on both sides of the street and two-way traffic. It is very scary. I would be very curious to hear if you have any readout on any accidents that have occurred on that street because it is very scary for new drivers, for old drivers driving down South Avenue. Um, you know, when the visibility is bad, it's bad in climate weather. If it's after the sun goes down, it's very, very dangerous.
So, we have a plan to address some of the parking issues on South Avenue because we have apartments and brothers that are not parking in their spaces on the property where they reside. And so, we will be addressing some of the challenges with the parking on South Avenue. Also, um, the, there's some buildings where there's parking in the lot, but for whatever reason, um, some of the tenants of those buildings, it is convenient for them to park on South Avenue. So, we're gonna be addressing that and we're looking to address that very, very soon. We also have to monitor some of the apartment buildings that are charging people for parking in the parking lots. That's against our ordinance. You cannot charge your tenant for parking. And so, that's another item, an issue that we are gonna be addressing with some of the landlords. And we're gonna send out reminding notices with reference to the code so that these landlords know that they cannot charge for parking. That's one of the reasons you see so many vehicles on the street. And also, there's a lot of traffic from the schools that are there on South Avenue, especially at different hours during the course of the day. So, we are aware of some of the congestion that is on South Avenue, but it's fixable.
From here, I just to add to that, we are gonna be looking at a residential permit system. And what the residential permit system would allow is that it's not to charge additional to the residents that actually live along South Avenue, but it's so to make sure that the residents there do have permits that are available and the residents that should be charging, should be parking in their developments are actually parking there and they will be penalized. But we're gonna do outreach coming up this spring to hear more about where the issues are and understand and from you, the residents, how you'd like the residential permit system to work. Because we're not gonna be charging residents to have a decal to park in the street.
Who should the residents be contacting if they find that their landlords are charging them for parking? They should reach out to Economic Development, go to the Economic Developments. On the page, you have my email address and a contact file.
And, you know, quite frankly, if we have to bring out a hammer, um, because their approvals from the planning board, all of that is a part of the parking that they're supposed to provide. And it's an ordinance to say you cannot charge for parking. So, they could be endangering the violent agreements that they have with the city. So, just bringing to our attention, if landlords are charging for parking, please let us know.
Are there enough spaces for the new buildings?
Is there a question over here?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. Uh, Plainfield is a sanctuary city which has its.
And this is the last question, by the way.
Plainfield is a sanctuary, uh, city which has its, uh, positives and negatives. Given that the federal government is becoming more aggressive trying to round up people, uh, does Plainfield have a policy for its citizens?
Plainfield is not a sanctuary city. Plainfield is what we refer to as a fair and welcoming city. And our policy is that we do not cooperate with the federal government, with ICE, with any law enforcement agency that seeks to target people in immigrant community. If an ICE agent, for example, has a judicial warrant, there's nothing we can do about that. We can't stand in the way of a law enforcement agency that has a judicial, um, warrant, which is signed by a judge. There's nothing we can do about that. But in terms of any cooperation with the feds on their policy of targeting people in the immigrant community, that's not happening in Plainfield, it will not happen. And we will continue to be a safe, a fair and welcoming city. Yes, we have some final words before we wrap up for the evening, um.
I just wanna thank all the residents for coming out, um, using your voice, speaking truth to power. Um, always keep in mind your council persons are here to hear your concerns. And thank you, mayor, members of your administration for being open to a forum like this and let this not be want and done, let's continue this path of being available and having these forums so the residents can continue to be heard. So, thank you.
Well. I do wanna thank you for coming out in front of any questions that you asked. And there's a lot more that we need to cover and we would like to do that. So, just stay tuned for the next forum. We're ready, from across the city, can attend any of the forums. And so, again, we thank all of you for coming out. Have a blessed evening. There will be a parade for the car. It will happen. We, we, we really are very proud of our county partners.